All right, ladies and gentlemen, the time is now seven o'clock. It's time for our meeting to start. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. I want to see you again here next meeting too. Every meeting, I love the crowd. Welcome, welcome. Our first order of business, as I'm gonna get Commissioner Bun to lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance. All stand please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all may be seated. All right, our first thing on the agenda tonight, before I start it, is in regards to Post 52 of Franklin, American Legion. I am also a very proud member of Post 52. It was years and years ago, Mr. Al Barber is the one that recruited me. And don't hold that against me, he was a good guy. I know you were. But anyway, like I announced that, I'm glad to see you. My fellow legionnaires out there tonight. You're a tough bunch, I think the world of you. Anyway, and at the request of the Commander, Chris Smith, wanted me to present this recognition for Eric Pierce of Franklinton. If Eric Pierce is here, come on down. Come on up here. Cause I'm gonna read your recognition here. And like for the Commander, come down. And I'm gonna read off the recognition proclamation. All right. The Board would like to recognize Franklin County resident Eric Pierce of Franklinton tonight. Mr. Pierce, please come forward, which he already has. Mr. Pierce is a Marine, having served in combat in Operation Enduring Freedom in Afghanistan. He is also Second Vice Commander of the American Legion Post 52 in Franklinton. He is a husband and a father of two. His latest title could be hero, but I'm gonna correct that. His latest title, he is a hero. Not could be, he is. On June 15th, Legionnaire Pierce happened in front of motor vehicle collision on Grill Green Hill Road. At the distance of his own safety, Mr. Pierce immediately begun checking on the vehicle occupants. He suffered pain to a victim whose femoral artery was cut with early bleeding. We understand Mr. Pierce told the victim, continued to apply pressure until paramedics arrived to take over treatment and call in life flight transport. While the specific outcome of the incident can't be disclosed, it has been said by Franklin County EMF that Mr. Pierce's actions helped save the victim's life that day. His courage and quick thinking went a long way to stabilize the victim and give her a chance to be flown to a hospital for care. Mr. Pierce, we thank you for your service to your country and your community, and particularly for the life-saving aid you rendered in Franklin County on the afternoon of June 15th. Thank you very much. Pierce would like to present this proclamation to this young man here.
I have a certificate here, says Life Saving Heroism Award. This certificate is honorably presented to Eric W. Pierce for life-saving actions taken to assist a motor vehicle accident victim on June the 15th, 2024, on Green Hill Road in Franklin. Legionnaire Pierce jumped into action to stabilize and control the victim's femoral artery bleed until paramedics could arrive and render treatment. Legionnaire Pierce's actions, in disregard to his own personal safety, undoubtedly saved the victim's life or followed him life flight transportation to a trauma center. Presented by Franklinton American Legion Post 52 Department of North Carolina at the meeting of the Franklin County Commissioners this 19th day of August, 2024.
Get your feet outside in the hallway, in the Post 52. People, come on out and let's go get our picture together here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Right, our next agenda item is Item One, which is our consent agenda. I know we have numerous issues on there. I myself would like to have one of them pulled. It's for the Item H, was a resolution of endorsement and recognition of Bun Lions Club Cert Team. Like to pull that one, like to put that in a motion.
Why are we pulling that, Commissioner?
Cause I would like to read the recognition, the proclamation. Honor that bunch, all the hard work they've done over the last couple of years.
I see.
There's been a motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I would like to start that off and.
I would like to pull Item G.
Item G? Okay, we put that in form of a motion? There's been a motion made, is there a second? I'll second that motion, get it onto the floor. Right, uh, there's been a motion made in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Right, moving on along. Any other Commissioners have anything here on the consent agenda? If not, I'm gonna ask Scott Strickland and his Cert crew to come forward so I can read off the proclamation, please. Like I say, there's been years and years on this moment right here. A lot of hard work, all volunteers, really appreciate everything you've done. But I would like to present this resolution and endorsement and recognition of the Bun Lions Club Cert Team. Whereas Franklin County Government is responsible for meeting the needs of the community from impacts resulting from large scale special events, public health emergencies, large emergencies and disasters. Whereas it is the goal of Franklin County Government to plan for resilient responses through disaster preparedness and resource identification, including promoting and supporting volunteerism through training and community education. And whereas the Community Emergency Response Team is a nationally recognized organization of trained volunteers who are trained to support first responders and their family, friends, coworkers, neighbors in their own community, school, businesses and/or faith-based congregations. And whereas the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management has established guidelines, procedures and a code of ethic for the establishment of a new Community Emergency Response Team in North Carolina. And whereas the Bun Lions Club Community Emergency Response Team has successfully met the requirements of the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management in the establishment of it being a fully functional Community Emergency Response Team. And whereas the Bun Lions Club Community Emergency Response Team has proven to be a good partner to the Franklin County Emergency Services and their partners. And is committed to remain being a good partner through their adherence to the best practices, lessons learned and the expectations of the North Carolina Division of Emergency Management Community Emergency Response Team Code of Conduct. And whereas the Bun Lions Club Community Emergency Response Team operates as an independent nonprofit organization within the state of North Carolina and requires no continuing financial contributions from Franklin County Government. And whereas the Bun Lions Club Community Emergency Response Team's primary jurisdiction for the recruitment of volunteers and promoting resilient communities shall be within the confinement of the Bun Volunteer Fire District as outlined by the Franklin County Code of Ordinances and is subject to change at the direction of the Franklin County Emergency Management Department. Whereas Franklin County Emergency Management Department, they call upon individual Community Emergency Response Team members or official teams to support mitigation, prevention, preparedness, response and/or recovery activities are needed anywhere in Franklin County. Whereas it is required that the Community Emergency Response Teams have a formal sponsoring agencies to provide guidance and direction for day-to-day activities, membership recruitment and retention, facilitating trainings and promoting internal and external team growth. Now therefore, being resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to formally recognize, endorse and serve as a sponsoring agency for the Bun Lions Club Community Emergency Response Team and delegates the Franklin County Emergency Management Department to work with the Bun Lions Club Community Emergency Training of Volunteers to be able to support Franklin County Emergency Services and their partners in response to impactful incidents and events until such time that it is determined that the Bun's Lion Club Community Emergency Response Team is no longer eligible for sponsorship or car sponsorship, or their services are deemed to be no longer needed. Approve this 19th day of August, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, motion made in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, Cert Team, I'd like for you to meet us out in the hallway for the picture-taking.
We need to approve the remainder of the items on the consent agenda.
Oh, consent agenda, oh yeah. I'm gonna leave without doing that. That'd be unfinished business. All right, we're all back together. That pleaser still takes us back to the consent agenda and the remaining items on there. I'm gonna go over it right quick. A, August 5th, 2024. B, minutes. B, the physical year budget amendment number three. Item C, purchase of the Bun Radio Tower property. D, Greenway easement dedication for Youngsville Convenience Site. E, resolution requesting the NC DOT to process all petitions for additions to the state maintained secondary road system within Franklin County. Item F is a resolution appointing review officer, Aaron Cook, Planner One. Item G, Animal Services Advisory Board Bylaws Amendment. And we've already voted on Item H. Item I is Triangle North Franklin Revenue Distribution Real Property. Item J, United Way Basketball Court Project Matching Funds. Item K is Human Resources Policy, Employment of Relatives. All right, do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, been a motion made in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Right. What do you mean?
Now comes the most important agenda item of the night, again. Item number two is comments from the public. And our first sign up was Mr. David Cretty. Please come down to the podium. Give us a piece of your mind.
So I'm here regarding the property tax. My bill went up $900 this last year. My house was appraised last year as a new deal. I think a $900 increase. It's ridiculous. My home value went up $130,000, my land value doubled. Originally was an appraised value, it became high. The entire county was pretty upset. We're relieved to hear that the tax rate would create a revenue neutral state for the county on property taxes. It, I don't know if that happened or not, but I know many people are really upset about the property taxes. And then my, I tried to do the appeal, did an informal appeal. Never heard anything back, called, told to wait. Never heard anything back. Apparently the appeal process closed right before the tax bills went out. Now I have heard that you could leave the appeal process open till November for people that don't know they can do it, or whatever reason. Like, like me, I never heard anything back from the appeal process. So why does the appeal process close when it could be open? And I, I don't even know what to do. And I'm not the only one, they've been locking people out. They lock people. And the friends of house are appraised higher than the villa estimate on our house.
I can get back with you on that, I've got your phone number here. Any other Commissioner got anything they want to add? All right, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Krista Duncan.
Good evening, Krista Duncan, 834 Duke Valentine Wind Road in Lewisburg. First, I want to express my deepest appreciation to all of the Commissioners who voted in favor of terminating our now previous animal shelter manager. I understand that everyone on this board voted in favor of firing her, with the only exception of course, being Commissioner Bragg. This has been a long road and I encourage our community to now support our Assistant County Manager Will Dorfer and the remaining shelter staff as they create appropriate operating procedures and processes that advocate for animals in their care. Thank you also to all of the key rescue partners who have stepped up to pull animals and offer their time and expertise during this time of transition. None of this would have been possible without the support of our animal-loving community and advocates who identified problems and inefficiencies that could all be tied back to mismanagement. Citizens' voices need to be heard by our elected officials. Speaking of voices, I would like to read you a letter that I wrote to the paper earlier this month. Dear Editor, I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the recent developments in Franklin County that have raised questions about transparency and public access to government proceedings. There are significant issues that deserve immediate attention and scrutiny. First, I'm troubled by the decision to livestream only the County Board of Commissioners meetings while excluding other public meetings. It is crucial for all public meetings to be transparent and accessible to citizens. Limiting livestreaming to just one type of meeting restricts public oversight and participation in key discussions that affect our community. The availability of such vital information should not be a privilege reserved for a select few meetings. Every gathering should be equally open to scrutiny. Second, I must address the disappointing vote cast by Commissioners Bragg, Dunn, Pierce and Shriver to limit the individual public comment speaking time to five minutes per person and cap the overall public comment at just 30 minutes per meeting. This policy appears to undermine the voices of community members, particularly those advocating for the welfare of animals. It raises concerns that the Commission is attempting to silence important viewpoints that require serious consideration and dialogue. Limiting the public's ability to express their concerns is an affront to democratic principles. Lastly, I have observed that the local reporting has on occasion seemingly portrayed a positive spin towards county government during where, during meetings where crucial transparency issues were discussed. To the point where if the reporter sat through this, sorry, to the point where I wondered if the reporter sat through the same meetings that I did. This approach raises questions about the impartiality of coverage, particularly when the very moments that require scrutiny and transparency are not adequately represented to the public. We must advocate for fair and balanced reporting that fosters an informed citizenry that, rather than dilutes our collective voices. Transparency and inclusion in governance are fundamental to a healthy democratic society. I hope that other concerned citizens will join me in advocating for a system that prioritizes openness and actively involves the community in its decision-making process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment section. Sorry, okay. Okay, did you sign up? Okay, we're good, come on down. Yeah, go ahead, bring me that sheet there. Yeah, cause I picked this one up a couple of minutes before seven. Okay, okay, Lars.
Dejuner.
Toppen, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Hey, thank you, thank you for a few minutes.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm, I'm representing the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, but I also have a full-time job. But we are sponsoring a community discussion around how faith groups and community leaders can work together on solving problems that have common interests for all of us. And as Christians, you know, Christ taught us the two great commandments, love one another and love God. He provided that ultimate example. Uh, we strive to follow these teachings and we have several programs to do this. And one recently that we just did was deliver a semi truck full of food to some of the food, the, the food banks in the area. Because we recognized that the rural food banks were underserved from that standpoint. So there's a lot of common areas between faith groups and community where we can share our resources. So we've already have Representative Robertson from south of us and we're inviting state representatives and mayors and people like yourself to come to this discussion and really discuss how we can kind of marshal these resources. The example we just saw with the emergency preparedness, we have similar programs that we've leveraged and worked with community leaders. So I just wanted to personally invite you, I sent the email out to you today. And we'd love to have a representative from the Commission here at that meeting in September 26th and really kind of talk about these things and really build out how we can apply for additional grants to fund things. We know that Franklin County does not have a homeless shelter. You know, we know there's other needs that are dire that we all care about. And I think together with faith groups and community, we can, we can make an impact to some of these social, basically, social problems and, and the welfare of our community. So with that, just wanted to thank you and I appreciate your consideration to come in September 26th.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is number three, action items. Section A, Public Safety Radio System Change Orders. Kristy Sheridan, Emergency Communications Director, will present change orders for the Public Safety Radio System on behalf of the Williams Communications and Tussle Consulting. Ken Steer with Williams Communications will be in attendance. Right, Ms. Sheridan? Okay, turn on the TV.
You have to let me know when it's working.
There we go.
Good?
All right, yes, yes ma'am, go ahead.
Good evening, I'm here tonight to talk about two change orders for the radio system. Uh, just to go ahead and make sure I tell you this. We have Ken here from Williams Communications in the audience and we also have Rebecca from TUSA Consulting on, online through Google for questions, so. Apparently I'm technologically challenged today. Okay, the first one we'll talk about is with Williams Communications. Um, this change order has come about as a change in the location for the Bun Tower site. So this, first, I'm gonna go through each bullet item that has a cost associated to it to give you a little bit of information on each one. So the Bun has site development for $154,628.50. This is due to the site relocation, having to redo the required studies. This is due to the site relocation, having to redo the required studies and approvals that must be completed to get the necessary permits from the FAA, FCC, environmental, things of that state. New construction documents. There's a larger compound and, which results in more site development costs. The next one is for three hundred and thirty-foot self-supporting tower for three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and ten cent. This is to add an additional eighty foot to the tower height. If it was originally supposed to be a two hundred and fifty-foot tower, this would move it to three hundred and thirty feet. This is resulting in additional steel transportation costs, that steel, a larger foundation, which is more concrete and rebar. Additional engineering for the Bun High location, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cent. It's additional year of project management and engineering for this site. Microwave battery charging for thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. So the microwave batteries for the system have been in storage and will require charging to ensure that the proper voltage is maintained while they're stored. It's a hundred and forty-four batteries. This is a one-time charge as we continue on. Warehouse rental extension for thirty-one thousand, two hundred dollars. This is an eight-month extension to provide storage while the final site is being constructed. The New Hope Site for twelve thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and six cent. As a result of the geotech reports and analysis, we had to make a change to the tower foundation away from normal soil conditions, which increased the foundation, required more concrete and rebar, and also required an additional bearing and penetration test by inspections because of the type of soil that it was. And the Margaret Site for eight thousand and thirty-four dollars. This is a state-owned site. We had to do some additional shelter foundation, concrete testing, and inspections that weren't previously required. So that is all of the ones that has a cost associated to it. The next one would be to extend the implementation schedule to move the project completion to no later than July thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five. A change to the milestone billing for the fifth milestone, we would add to the end on a per-site basis, ten percent. So ten percent of the total agreement price shall be due upon substantial completion of the system infrastructure installation on a per-site basis. So as they implement the equipment and get these sites online, they can bill on a per-site basis versus at the end when everything's done. A coverage acceptance test plan modification. There was some challenges with the tower at New Hope. And the FAA required the tower height to be reduced from what we originally proposed is three hundred and twenty-five feet, the highest point, which would be the highest point of that tower, which is the end of the lightning rod. FAA required us to lower it to two hundred and ninety-four feet because of the close proximity to the airport. This impacted coverage in twenty dB structures in the lower two miles of the 401 corridor, starting at the Franklin-Wake County line. And the proposal is to change it to eighteen dB instead of twenty dB in this section. That section is about sixty tiles in there, quarter mile by quarter mile. The other change order would be for TUSA Consulting to extend their contract through August thirty-first of twenty-twenty-five to get us through cut over and the thirty-day burn-in period, and that's an additional eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars. So the actual request would be consider approval of the Williams Communication Change Order Two for six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and ninety-nine cent, and the TUSA Consulting Change Order for eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars, and authorize county manager to execute the change orders and all related documents. I will say earlier this afternoon, the nine-one-one advisory board met and went over the same presentation. There was some concerns expressed about the coverage acceptance tan, test plan modification. During that meeting, my, my recommendation would be to pull that piece out of this change order and move forward with the rest. But we have Ken and Rebecca to answer any questions about that piece or any other piece.
Is that true? Completion? Any questions from the board members? Discussion?
Okay. The Bun Tower cost additional because we had to move it from where it was originally placed to the new site, and that's why it's costing so much more.
Yes.
Okay. The other question I had was, the New Hope Tower had to be lowered. So did we have to pay as much money since it's not as big as it? Did we save some money there?
Say they go up when they go higher.
Well, and they go.
So the tower was already manufactured for that site, so I don't recall us putting any savings into the. So you had to modify that section a little bit further, yeah.
That's a bummer.
Well, so the tower itself would have only been three hundred feet tall, but the lightning antenna would go up to three twenty-five, so technically it's only six feet of steel.
The date of completion is July one twenty-five. What was the original date of completion?
June thirtieth of twenty-four.
This is delaying it for probably about thirteen months.
Yeah.
And I think, is any other commissioner, comments, questions? I have one. I don't think any of these change orders include the other piece of the puzzle, which is the land acquisition, which was approximately how much?
That was in the consent agenda.
Okay.
In the consent agenda.
What was that dollar amount of?
Just a little over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so we're looking over. Over a million dollars.
Yeah, we can add three hundred and fifty to that.
Over, originally planned on thirteen-month delay because of this shift in the antenna.
The shift in the site location.
In the site, in the Bun Site.
Right. Before it was originally planned, it part apart. So where it's going to go now if it's, gets voted in. I guess it will.
That's correct.
All right, any other comments?
So, yes, I do. So your comment at the end regarding the piece you would pause against or pull away from, that's going from the twenty dB to the eighteen dB?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit more so that we all understand exactly what you're, you're asking?
I'm actually going to ask Rebecca to do that, to elaborate more on that. Bear with us. Hopefully, this works correctly. Rebecca, did you?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Did you hear the question?
I did not hear the question. Can you repeat it for me?
Can you elaborate on the eighteen dB change from the twenty dB change and essentially what that means as far as coverage testing buildings and that nature?
Absolutely. So, the dB loss relates to how dense or big a building is. And we usually have residential buildings at about ten or twelve dB, so single-story, two-story family homes. And then big industrial warehouses, metal buildings, things like Lowe's, Home Depot, manufacturing facilities usually get up into the eighteen to twenty dB range, sometimes more. But twenty is a very good average for those kind of buildings. In that area, because of the tower height decreased by the FAA and the move with the Bun Tower, what that did was lower the dense building coverage, building loss, not the actual percentage. But now buildings that are nineteen or twenty dB may be at risk for not having as good a coverage as the eighteen and below. And TUSA looked at that area of the county. There are no buildings we feel meet that criteria there today. And according to resources in the county, there's none planned in that area today. So we did recommend that the county adopt that change and consider an alternative if you are worried about that two dB loss to coverage in that area, which could be as simple as a code ordinance change. Most municipalities require a radio test prior to certificate of occupancy just to know whether or not they are greater than the dB for that area. That's a very, very easy thing to do. It's actually in the NFPA standards. And then, you know, worst-case scenario, you could plan to build another tower down there. But again, with there not being any dense buildings in that area, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that today.
So it's fair to say that for now, since that area is not populated with these type of buildings, system would be adequate, and we could approach this later as we have buildings that are more of the size you're speaking of. We may need to then produce another tower in that region to support.
That, that's correct. We anticipate having to add towers as we continue to grow anyway.
Anything else? Well, like I say, even though it's a million extra dollars and thirteen-month delay, we still got to have it. Got to have emergency communications. Oh, I entertain a motion from the board.
Move to approve.
And a motion made?
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Sharon?
Rebecca, I'm going to hang up on you now.
All right, our next item, action item is item B, solid waste account write-offs and policy approval. Here in the fiscal year twenty-three audit, the audit reviewed identified Franklin County solid waste receivables that are statutorily uncollectible. The solid waste director and finance director have identified twenty accounts with balances that need to be cleared with a total request to write off one hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty-one cent. In addition, the board is asked to approve charging a one-point-five percent per month late fee for delinquent solid waste accounts and approve the solid waste delinquent accounts and late, late fee policy. I have a county finance officer here to help us along on this.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
The fiscal year twenty-three audit revealed that the solid waste had account balances that fell outside the statute of limitations for collecting and were uncollectible. The statute allows for solid waste accounts to be collectible for three years. These balances are before July twenty-twenty-one. The Board of Commissioners approval is required to write off the uncollectible balance in receivables and move them to bad debt. This is the first time uncollectible accounts have been written off since solid waste was appropriately established as an enterprise fund. Staff has drafted policies and procedures to address and standardize the collection of past due accounts in the future. The solid waste director and myself reviewed all outstanding accounts receivable balances and separated the collectible within the three years and the accounts that were uncollectible, the ones that were over three years. There are a total of twenty accounts that have balances outside the collection window that need to be cleared. The total amount of the requested write-off is one hundred and ninety-two thousand, three seventy-seven, sixty-one. This is not an expense to the solid waste department, but just getting rid of accounts that we cannot collect the balances on. The independent auditor has reviewed our process and is in agreement. Going forward, solid waste will be reviewing receivables on a regular basis and will bring write-offs to the Board of, to the Board for consideration yearly. The delinquent accounts and late fee policy that has been drafted for the board approval sets the timeline for delinquent account collections and the procedures for the solid waste staff for account review. Late fees will be applied to account statements twenty-five days from the statement date if payment has not been received. Accounts not paid within twenty-five days will be subject to a late fee of one-point-five percent on the outstanding balance. At sixty days past due, the charge to account privileges would be denied, and the account would be placed in cash-only status, meaning they would have to pay before dumping and no longer allowed to charge. At ninety days past due, the account is no longer allowed to dump at the transfer station, and a letter of delinquency will be sent to the account holder. At six months, delinquent notice of account termination will be sent to the account holder. Throughout this process, solid waste staff will be contacting the account holder and working on collecting the outstanding balances. The county will also pursue debt set-off for collection of accounts after they are delinquent for a year. The requested action tonight is for the board to approve writing off the one hundred and ninety-two thousand, three seventy-seven, sixty-one as uncollectible for the solid waste fund. Approve the charging of the one-and-a-half percent per month late fee for delinquent solid waste accounts and add this charge to the fiscal year twenty-five fee schedule. And lastly, to approve the Franklin County solid waste delinquent accounts and late fee policy. Staff will continue to pursue all avenues for collecting debt for the outstanding receivables balances within the allowable timeframe. Going forward, there'll be an annual review of all outstanding accounts and request the board to write off amounts deemed uncollectible. The solid waste director is actively recruiting, recruiting, and doing interviews for the solid waste administrative support specialist one position that will assist with the collections process. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions.
Any board members?
I have a question. Sure. Whose job was it to get this hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars? Whose responsibility was that?
The solid waste is responsible for their own accounts receivables and collections.
So that would be the director of solid waste?
Yes, sir, but we did not have an official policy of how to address that, which is what this policy is going to be doing going forward, of, of the certain steps that are required.
That having been said, I would move to approve the requested action as stated.
And a motion made?
Second.
A motion made and second. Any discussion? And hopefully, I'm going to make some comment. This future plan won't allow us to get that behind, no way even close like that.
No.
Before they're shut off.
No, sir. You will be getting collection, the write-offs every year going forward. I don't know what those amounts may be, but they should not be to this level again.
All I could say is whoever did this hundred and ninety-two thousand, I want to see how you could even let them have another chance.
There have been some changes to the application process and everything as well. And some of this is late fees and stuff as well. But yes, sir, there has been a review of, or going to be a review of all of the accounts.
Okay, but maybe still not reaching out to the people that stuck with this hundred and ninety-two thousand.
Okay. Also, it's fair to say, earlier you stated that this is debt that was over three years old.
It's over three.
So this is accumulated aging that just carried on the books and just never got addressed.
Some of these are from like two thousand and sixteen balances. Even some businesses have closed and that kind of thing. Yes, sir.
Sure.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving right along to item four, appointments. First one, we have the Lewisburg Board of Adjustment. The board is asked to reappoint Brian Cash for a three-year term. What's the pledge?
Move to approve. Second.
And a motion made and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next one is the Lewisburg Planning Board, ETJ. The board is asked to reappoint Fannie Perry for a three-year term and to appoint Staley Medlin for a three-year term.
Move to approve. Second.
And a motion made and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Item five is other business. Does anybody here got any other business that would like to bring up? Here are none. Move on to item six, which is our Board Manager and Clerk's Comments. This is a time set aside for the Board of County Commissioners, County Manager, and Clerk to the Board to report on various activities. The Board may also discuss other items of interest. I'm going to start out with our attorney over there. Rest your case, okay? County Clerk, Kristen King. Nothing? Oh, Commissioner Bun.
My comment.
Commissioner London.
Um, I attended the one hundred and seventeen Fort Carolina Association of Commissioners Conference. And I was able to sit in on a session where a presentation was given about how counties work foster here. can support foster care, foster care children. It was very informative, very engaging. Um, just wanted to thank all Franklin County students, students, staff. And lastly, on Monday, August 26th, I'll be celebrating my 40th birthday.
Wow, that'd be great. That's right, that'd be great. Will that complete your report?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good job. Commissioner Brack?
I guess I have. Other business? I have several things. Um, one thing I want to correct Ms. Krista Duncan when she came up and said that, um, that I was the only person to vote no at Byron, the animal services staff. Um, I know that her information was incorrect. I don't think any of us voted on. That was the county manager and the assistant county manager's decision. And I don't think any of us voted on any of that. So wherever she got that information, it was incorrect and I want to make sure that that's corrected. Um, the other thing that was mentioned was the five minute policy. And I brought this for one other region reason, but since she brought it up, this is in there too. This is our procedures for meeting and you all have this for the meetings of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners right here. We all have this in our procedure. And I'm going to read this. Um, immediately following the consent agenda, each agenda shall include a time set aside for individuals or groups who wish to address the board. Such individuals or groups that wish to address the board shall sign in at the beginning of each meeting on a signup sheet provided by the clerk. The time limit for each speaker shall be five minutes with a total time limit set aside for informal public comment of 30 minutes. Um, once the time is set aside for individual or total informal, um, public comments has expired, the chair may recognize additional time for speakers only upon a motion duly made and adopted. This is in here. This is already set in, in our, um, procedure. So it's not something new. It's not something new we just came up with. Um, we were just following procedure.
If I may, regarding that subject, I was the one that made the motion that we go back to the five minutes and the 30 minutes total. When I say go back, I mean, it was put in place in a motion years ago. All I did was go back to where we were supposed to be going to start with.
And we're just following procedure.
That's it.
That's it. The next thing I want to talk about is I had asked to remove G, which is Animal Services Advisory Board bylaws amendment, again, in our policies and procedure. I had read this a long time ago. I remembered that this was in here. I went back and pulled it up because you know, I tell y'all all the time, I research. And I don't know if I'm interpreting this correctly, but it does say, um, in accordance with, um, general statute 153A-76, the following will governor, will govern boards and or commissions in Franklin County. Um, each board will have seven members unless contrary to the general statute provisions or state agency policy. One or more commissioners may serve on each board or commission as judged necessary by the board of commissioner. A commissioner may not serve as chief. And it goes on talking about that. I pulled that out or asked to pull that out because that's in here and y'all all voted for it. And I think it's against what we have set in our procedures, righty? And if y'all didn't know that or hadn't read the procedures, at least I read them. It's in here. So I think that's a, we need to study. We need to know what's in our procedures here. That's why I keep one handy and I had read that. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention was, um, we talked about a while ago and we've, we discussed the pool tables at the senior center in Lewisburg and moving those to another room. And I know I have been over there and met with the director there and we talked about where the pool tables could be moved and maybe adding an additional table into a larger room. Um, the, there are, if you go over there, there's many, many men that play pool on two tables every day. They wear those covers off all the time, which that's a good problem. We could have those tables sitting there and nobody playing on them or nobody going in the seniors. And it's a great problem, um, but they only have, um, the room is so small. Um, we've made suggestions. I know that Harry went and talked to him about it and, um, nothing has been done about that yet. So I'm going to ask him if he can make sure that something gets done about pool tables and the pool players because this has been going on every year, um, that they haven't new, new, something needs to be done about. Okay? Uh, I did attend the conference also in, um, Winston Salem. And I went to several workshops and one of interest was one on animal control, animal services. Danny went to it too. Um, we learned a lot about, um, animal services and what should and shouldn't be done in that workshop and things that we haven't done in this county. So, um, that was quite interesting.
Is that your report?
I hope so.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Pierce?
As she just said, I attended the NCACC as well. And there's one thing that really shocked me regarding the lottery money that comes to Franklin County education programs. Specifically Franklin County. Now, we're not talking about North Carolina State or anything else. And it gives a breakdown of what that consists of. Teachers, school construction, all kinds of different things. That is something we need to look serious at.
Okay. In regards to make sure we get our fair share?
Now, all that money being given to the schools. And then we have to give more.
If you're a filter group, say, or it's a plan of funds that needs to be applied to support. It's not like we get just the lottery charge.
It's like I tell my customers, my three stores, even if you don't win, you're helping out the school children. Sometimes it's thinking quite a little bit sometimes, but that's what they say it goes for. Right. Commissioner Pierce, does that conclude your report?
That's it.
Commissioner Speed?
No comment.
No comment. Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, I've had the opportunity to meet with the town of Youngsville a couple of times now with the mayor and the manager and just trying to work on, um, what is the strategy moving, uh, what is the strategy moving forward for the bypass? So for those in the Youngsville area that's concerned about traffic and things like that, kind of taking on the liaison role from the county to help facilitate a better, how we can all collaborate on that and make that happen. So hopefully, um, the town's going to be coming to us in the next meeting or two to share with us some updates. They've done a lot of work, a lot of really good work. They've networked in a lot of the right places. Um, and quite frankly, they're one of the, maybe even the first, according to one of the DOT folks, one of the first towns to actually take the initiative to help design and uphold a bypass for a town. So, um, that's all really good stuff. Um, second item is, um, I couldn't miss this, but our EMS and our emergency management folks, um, stood in the way of Hurricane Debbie or whatever she was when she got to us. And I know I caught a glimpse of our EM, uh, emergency management director, Mr. Nick Thor on, um, WRL. So I just want to be sure that we give praise where praise is due to those men and women that, uh, go out brave those storms, uh, when we all hunker down and find our safe spaces. These folks are out in 5,000 pound and 8,000 pound four, four wheel tire vehicles, um, going to where it is happening. So, um, so thank you for your diligence and your service. Please pass that along to those that are under you, um, both Matt and, and Nick. Please do that. Um, I think it's, it never hurts to, uh, say thank you. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Kim Dunn, our county manager?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Foote. I too would like to say thank you to all of the public safety personnel, uh, that watched over the county and watched over all the citizens and resources that we have in the county during Hurricane Debbie or tropical storm Debbie, I guess. Um, Thursday morning started out very unexpectedly with the tornado touching down into county. Um, I was not in the county and, uh, and so working back with staff and communicating, um, a very, uh, strong team of folks here communicating, uh, throughout the county, emergency management, uh, EMS, the sheriff's office, our coordinating agencies in our towns, all working together. Uh, there's a whole lot of coverage, media coverage on Franklin County that whole day because we started the day, of course, with a tornado touching down and we ended the day with a tornado touching down. But thankfully, no loss of life, no injuries, uh, just injuries to property and vegetation and those kinds of things. So to our emergency manager, Nicholas Thor, um, to EMS and all the folks that are here tonight with EMS, sheriff's office and, and various agencies that I won't even be able to call out all those names. Public utilities is also a part of that, public safety, uh, so is planning and inspections on that public safety side. So again, appreciate all that they did and the efforts that everyone pulls together team wise to keep our county safe. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
All right. All right. I'd like to echo that same statement to all our manu, our emergency management systems here and our staff. I was also at the NCACC meeting over in Winston Salem at the time. Fortunately, I left Wednesday early when it was a pretty day, but that next day, I couldn't believe it, but I was listening intensely to the updates, watching TV. Tornadoes, especially right around, down around Zebulon, Bailey, and I saw one pop up. Hi, oh my goodness, that's right there at my house almost. But, uh, like I say, hats and kudos to all our emergency people that looked over and kept us all informed and on radio, protect us and everything. But, duh. Anyway, moving right along, I too have been a part of the Youngsville bypass committee. Report that very much. Very desperately needed. It can't wait another 30, 40, 50 years. Not the way that growth is going down there. I think we're making some good progress on that to get that underway. And there's another little project I sit on the Campo Board. That's the, uh, capital area highway board that I sit on and, uh, we're looking at putting a roundabout there at five points in Youngsville. That's right where the Speedway is at and, and the old liquor store and stuff, but a roundabout in that section too. But what we really need to go along with that will be that bypass to make it all work good. Uh, like I said, again, I was over at that's the, uh, uh, meeting over at Winston Salem. Listen, I was there for the Thursday and the Friday. I had to get back early Saturday morning, but, uh, one of the more interesting seminars I sat in on was sheriff of Forsyth County. Mr. Kimbrough had a presentation on how they're doing drones in their county. And it is completely amazing what he's doing with that, the sheriff, the high sheriff of Forsyth County. They even have a drone that's large enough to transfer, transport people. But all kinds of things such as looking over scenes, crime scenes, uh, fire departments before they get there. And it was going on and on, some of the stuff they were doing with that. Uh, there before people get involved, really impressive. Hopefully, I mean, we can get some of that going here, here in this county. It's definitely a lifesaver. But, duh. Anyway, I did miss a one thing in one of the seminars that was on Saturday. It was called the ferocious feline population. I'm sorry I missed that. Very much interested in that one. They say I can, they say I can go online and still watch that, but, uh, that name, that's definitely an issue here in this county or all over, uh, just here, but, uh, open there. And, uh, that concludes my report. And, uh, moving on to item number seven. The board is asked to enter into closed session pursuant to the following North Carolina general statutes. The first bullet is NCGS 143318-11A3, attorney client privilege communication. And the second bullet is NCGS 143318-11A5, real property purchase contracts and leases. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to go into closed session.
Second. And a motion made and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll be back out here pretty quick, I hope.
Next year.
Move to come out of closed session?
Aye.
Okay, been a motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Move toward adjourned, second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Y'all have a good evening now.
We just wanted to say thank you to all the commissioners and the county manager for taking the initiative to try to make it get us on board here.